This day, we appreciate you for all that you are doing, all that you have done. We ask your blessing over this meeting tonight. We ask you to guide our leaders. Bless them that they may continue to do what is best and necessary for this city and for this community. We ask your guidance, we ask your great leadership, and we ask your anointing. And we glorify you in it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Tonight, before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, sit down just a moment, please. I want to talk a little bit about the group that's going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. The Paducah Tillman Navy Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps program was established in 2001 and 2002. It's a citizenship program and in no way is involved in recruiting for military. Paducah Tillman's NJROTC program has assisted some of the students in earning full-time, full-ride scholarships in college, ROTC scholarships. Last school year, the cadets at Paducah Tillman performed nearly 4,000 hours of community service. Paducah Tillman's unit has earned the NJROTC Distinguished Unit Award numerous times, and this is like a top award that you can earn, and it's presented to less than 20 percent of the units across the country. In 2011, our unit here in Paducah was the only unit in the Commonwealth of Kentucky to earn this award. So Lieutenant Commander Donald Taylor, U.S. Navy retired, if you'll bring your four young ROTC up here, and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. About face and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, two. Ready, face. Right, face.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or deletions tonight? Steve? Okay. Before we go into our proclamation, I would like to say that we lost a good citizen of Paducah this week. He was someone that made Paducah a better place in which to live, and that's Charles N. Penniger. He joined the Paducah Police Department in 1984 until his retirement as Assistant Police Chief in 2005. He was employed as a network technician in the city's information technology department. And I truly do mean what I say when I said that he made Paducah a better place in which to live. A very well-respected man, and we will certainly all miss him. So I'd like for you to say a prayer for his family, because it's always harder the few days after. Tonight, we have some proclamations. And the first one is for Mr. Harold T. Alston, Sr. Is the microphone working up there, Steve?
Yes, please.
Would you like to come up? Come on up here with me. This is the best part of doing this type of work. "To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas during Black History Month, we recognize the courage, tenacity, and contributions of African-Americans whose legacies are woven into the fabric of our nation; and whereas African-Americans have played a significant role in U.S. military history; and whereas Tuskegee Airmen refer to the pilots, navigators, maintenance personnel, support staff, and instructors who were involved in the program to train African-Americans to fly and maintain combat aircraft during World War II; and whereas Harold T. Alston, Sr., entered active service in 1943 and trained for several months at Tuskegee Institute with members of the 100th Signal Company; and whereas Alston was trained to build and service the new technology of radar and served as an electronics technician along with the Tuskegee-trained pilots of the 332nd Fighter Group until his discharge in November 1945. Now therefore, I, William F. Paxton, Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, in conjunction with Black History Month and in recognition of the achievements of local citizens hereby proclaim February 28, 2012 as Harold T. Alston Day." Oh, thank you so much. Bless you.
Thank you.
And I have one more, and I think I left it in your folder, Mr. Alston. So if the members of the American Red Cross will come up here, please.
Sure, everybody.
Hey, Teresa.
Hi.
Oh, yeah.
"To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas the American Red Cross is synonymous with helping people and has been doing so for more than 130 years; and whereas throughout the past year, the American Red Cross launched hundreds of disaster-reliefed operations in the United States to help people affected by fires, floods, hurricanes, and tornadoes; and whereas the American Red Cross work also supported major international disaster, including the Japan earthquake and tsunami response, while continuing its work on the 2010 Haiti earthquake response and recovery; and whereas during American Red Cross Month, we thank those who contribute to the mission of the Red Cross, whether through time, money, or blood. We invite others to support the Red Cross in helping people in need down the street, across the country, and around the world. And whereas the American Red Cross has touched many lives in Paducah working tirelessly, its 31 employees and many volunteers who support us when disaster strikes, when someone needs life-saving blood are the comfort of a helping hand, offering 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans and their families, and providing training in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. Now therefore, I, William F. Paxton, Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim March 2012 as American Red Cross Month in Paducah, and I encourage all citizens to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. And thank you all for everything you do." (applause) Thank you so much.
Well, yeah.
If you want to stick enough or you want to... Just let it go.
I think you can just...
He's ringing.
Yeah, why don't we just go down?
Yeah. People are calling to congratulate him.
Before you leave, Mr. Alston, we want to shake your hand for...
Thank you.
For the job well done, man. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right.
We thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yeah. We got one more, Mr. Alston.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, as long as you came in, I'll shake hands with you again.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, tonight, we have a presentation by Kentucky Alcoholic Beverage Server Training, Sandra Watts, and we have Sandy Jocelyn here tonight with her. Thank you.
Thank you all for the invitation. And before I start, I have to say, driving from Frankford here today, I felt like I was coming home. I'm originally from Hopkinsville, and the further south and west I came, you know, the trees were budding more, and there was more color, and the grass was green. It's like, I need to go home. But my kids, my kids are in central Kentucky, so that might be hard. But you have a beautiful city, and I really appreciate the invitation to be here tonight. What we're going to do is, is give an overview of the server training program that started in 2001, actually, 2002, in Kentucky. And I've got a short slide presentation. Before we start, I would like to tell you all what's in your pockets. I taught high school for 15 years, so I really think you have to have the paper copies to back up what you say. But if you'll open your pockets, on the left-hand side of your pocket is a copy of the presentation of the PowerPoint that we have. Right behind that, you have a list of the cities in Kentucky, as well as their local ABC administrators and phone numbers of the cities that have mandated responsible beverage server training. And behind that, you have copies of two local ordinances of the 52 cities that have mandated training, just for your information. On the right-hand side, you have a STAR brochure that we give to retail establishments that's also on our website that tells about the training. And then behind that, you have a letter that actually tells why we started the training, which I'll go over a little bit, and then the actual student workbook that we use in the classes that we have. And if you'll pull out the very last thing and leave it on top, we're going to talk about that graph in the, in the presentation. Okay? All right, now, which button, Steve, which button did you tell me to push, dear?
Blank, please.
Oh, here we go. Got it. Yeah. Okay. First of all, our agency is the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, and actually, what we do is provide alcohol licenses after the city approves the lot, the people who are going to be licensed with an alcohol license. We actually license, license them as well. And our main mission in our office, besides the licensing, is to protect the public by regulating the alcoholic beverage industry in the Commonwealth through public outreach, education, and enforcement. We've undertaken a special focus to combat youth access to alcohol and tobacco products. And here, I'd like to say, because I did teach high school for 15 years, I saw a lot of problems with underage kids being able to purchase alcohol from places that Kentucky provided a license to. And that really should not happen. We know it does, but it should not. The mission of education is to make the Commonwealth of Kentucky a safer place through education and public outreach. Through STAR, which is the program that was written by our office in 2002, server training and alcohol regulations, we train servers and sellers of alcohol regarding laws and liabilities. We provide, also provide programs and information for schools and community groups regarding laws, as well as the dangers of underage drinking, to assist in the main mission of our office. The education branch was actually created in 1998. I came on board in 2001 with the charge of writing the program and encouraging businesses to actually sign up and take the program. And that was kind of tough, because people who have been selling alcohol for a long time, a lot of times don't feel like they need this information. They feel like they know what they're doing, and it, we really had to encourage people to, to come in and, and see what the program included, to realize that, that there was information they needed to be safe in their business. Our branch currently consists of three full-time employees and 21 contract STAR instructors that work through our office. And Sandy Jocelyn is one of our contract instructors here in Paducah. And what we do is actually have constant contact with them. If something changes in the state, if something changes with our board's opinion, we relay that information to our instructors, and we'll talk about that just a little bit more. The STAR program is Kentucky-specific responsible beverage server training. It's designed for bartenders, servers, if they serve by the drink in a restaurant or a bar, sellers who may sell at Kroger or Minute Mart, owners of the establishments, managers, local ABC administrators, local police officers as well. Go back. And here, I would like to say that you all, I would like to invite you all to a class. I know you're really busy, but if you had time to come, anybody that's in law enforcement, an elected official, somebody who has a vested interest in assisting the businesses in the community, are more than welcome to come to the class at no charge. The details of STAR... Sorry, guys, I've had the flu, and it's trying to hang on a little bit. I know, I'm not going to breathe on you. This is a four-hour tested class. It comes with a three-year certification. We offer it on a statewide rotating schedule. And what we do there, the, of course, not all of Kentucky is wet, so the wet areas, the places that have mandated training, we will offer classes in those areas as they're needed. It's available in Spanish. We do have one Spanish instructor that actually traveled to Mayfield two weeks ago and conducted a Spanish training in Mayfield. The, the class cost is $35 a person, and we do offer private classes that for, if, if somebody has a group of 15 or more, we'll actually schedule it on a Saturday or a Sunday and go in their business and conduct the training in their business, because there are times that are better than others for training. The objectives of STAR, it's state-specific, that includes Kentucky statutes and regulations. It outlines Kentucky's priorities regarding responsible sales of alcohol, provides consistent expectations for licensees, and provides ABC with direct contact to servers and sellers. And you all, really, after, when Sandy finishes the class, she will encourage the, the servers, the sellers, the business owners, to call us if they have questions, because if they're doing something wrong, you know, or if they're planning, planning to do something, we want them to call us, because we're going to help them do it right, rather than let them do it wrong and going inside them. We'd rather them do it right the first time than to have to write a citation. The benefits of STAR today, the Operation Zero Tolerance, does anybody, do you all know, are y'all familiar with the OZT, what that is? Let me give a brief explanation of that. We employ underage persons in our agency to work with our investigators to go into businesses and try to purchase alcohol and tobacco products without an ID. And with this, a lot of times, we'll get complaints that so-and-so is selling to somebody underage, and that might tip us off to take an underage person in and go check to see if they really are doing this. Well, and, and once STAR training started, and we, we started the training, in 1997, we had a 68% compliance rate in the state of Kentucky, which meant, what's, 32 out of 100 were able to purchase alcohol without an ID. Now, and that's, that's why I ask you to pull this chart out, this will show you the number of places that were checked in the statistics. Now, we have a 93% compliance rate, because people are realizing that they need to just ask for identification when somebody comes in to try to purchase alcohol. Our local ASAP boards, that is a, that's a state prevention agency, and a lot of our prevention boards will actually provide money for STAR scholarships. They'll pay for part of the training for the businesses if they choose to do so. And also, there are a lot of liability insurance companies that will offer reduced rates for those who train everybody that serves in their business. Now, some of the insurance companies will not provide the liability insurance unless they can prove they've trained their employees. There are 52 communities that have mandated server training through local ordinances. And I didn't say this upfront, but it's not a state mandate that anybody has to train in Kentucky. You can turn 18 years old, and you can, you can sell in Kroger, Minute Mart, by the package. You have to be 20 to sell by the drink. But you can be 20 years old and sell alcohol with no training in Kentucky. This is just a bar graph to show you, on the left-hand side, I'm not very computer literate, so I couldn't get my numbers on the right to go to the left, but the, the very small graph on the left represents 1999. There was one community in Kentucky that required training, and that was one of the small communities outside of Louisville. And you can see, as the years go up, the white bar graph on the right is 2012. And we now have 52 communities that have decided that in their community, if somebody was going to sell alcohol, they were going to make sure they were going to do it safe and, and do it by the, by the Kentucky law. Okay, this is where I'd like for Sandy to talk a little bit about the training, except I have to tell a real fast, fast story before, before she starts to talk. When we, when we select the trainers for the, the contract trainers, we want to make sure that, that they're not against alcohol sales. We want to make sure that they have an understanding of why the law is important. And somebody gave me Sandy's number one day, about four years ago, I guess, and I just picked up the phone and called her. She was acting police chief at the time. And I said, "Sandy, would you give me 15 minutes to come and meet with you and show you a program?" She said, "Well, sure." Well, we set a date, went in, we talked about it, and when Sandy retired, I called her back, and I said, "Sandy, are you ready to come on board?" So she's been with now, what, three years, Sandy?
Since I retired, I think about a year and a half, I think.
Okay, well, I told her I wish I could duplicate her about 10 times, because she's wonderful. She's got a, a great knowledge of the program, and she's, she's just great. So I'm going to let her talk a little bit about the program.
Always nice to get a good introduction like that. Feels like deja vu for me up here. Okay, to tell you a little bit about the program, as she said, it is taught in a four-hour period, and it's taught in three sections. And the first section that we cover is laws and liabilities, and this is where we review actually what the laws are. There's a book about this thick that covers alcohol laws in Kentucky, and we condense that down to what's really relevant to the servers and the people that work in sales. And we try to break that law down and explain it to them in, in a way that they will understand it. And some of the topics that we cover in this section is sales and giving, or sales or giving, because giving is illegal also, alcohol to a minor. We talk a little bit about sales to people who are already intoxicated. We talk about sale after hours and selling with an improper license. And then we go into reviewing the server-seller liability, and I think this is a really, really important part of the class, because so many of the people that work in sales or serving don't realize that they can be criminally charged if they over-serve or if they sell to a minor. So this is very, very important. We explain about civil and criminal and administrative liability. We explain the difference. We talk a little bit about the offenses and what the fines are for the clerks, as well as for the businesses if they are cited. Also in this section, I try to give examples of cases in Kentucky where servers have been held not only criminally but civilly liable, where there's been a personal injury or a car accident. There was receipts tracking back to where they obtained that alcohol, and they have actually been held civilly liable in court for that. Our ABC enforcement officer here, Donnie Woods, he believes that this is one of the most important parts of the training, because he said most people that he comes in contact with who have had a violation weren't even aware that they could be charged criminally for this. And this is especially, I think, beneficial to our young servers, because we have a lot of young people that serve in restaurants and work as clerks, and many of them are students, and a lot of them don't realize, or it's never occurred to them, that if they have a criminal charge, you could keep them from pursuing their career goals. And Officer Woods gave me an example of this, as a young lady in Murray, Kentucky, who he had cited for selling to an underage individual, and she was actually a pre-med student at the university, and she ran into a lot of issues there with getting into medical school because she had, you know, because if you have a conviction, you cannot get into medical school. So a lot of the young people don't really take this as serious, and he felt like the class put this right up front for them and made them think about what they were doing and made them more conscientious about checking identifications. The second section that we talk about focuses on tips to help servers recognize a fake ID, and the workbook gives example of valid IDs for our surrounding states. And all of you all should have a copy of the workbook, and it'll give you some examples. It'll take, for example, it can take the driver's license and tell them specifically what to look for to know if that's a valid identification. We tell them some secrets and some trades on, on using some tools, too, to help check those IDs. And there's lots of new things out there available to them. There are scanners and black lights and things that they can use for checking these IDs. The third, the third section that we talk about covers avoiding over-service. This is kind of the biological part of the class, I suppose. It gives them information on how to detect when they need to stop service or when they need to refuse a sale to someone who may already be under the influence of alcohol. It gives them some solid information about alcohol's effect on the body and things that they can look for to help them make that decision. Then we wrap up the class with a short section on tobacco sales to minors. And we do have a test in this class. It's 30 questions, multiple choice. I stress that there is no stress on this testing. The object is not to have people fail the class or to do poorly. I always instruct them at the beginning of the class that if, when you get to the test, if there's something that you're not positively sure you're putting the correct answer, I have them to raise their hand, and we review that section with the whole group in the event that it wasn't explained thoroughly. Everything that they are asked is, is covered multiple times, so it's more important for them to get correct information before they answer their questions. I'm more interested in them getting the correct information than we are about what their score is on their test, I guess is what I'm trying to stress here. And really, there's absolutely no way to go in detail here in 10 minutes of what the class offers, but in the classes that I have taught, I've had very, very positive feedback. Most people come in dreading sitting through a four-hour class, just as I would have also, probably, and a lot of them have worked all night, don't really want to be there, but by the end of the four-hour class, they're going out with a positive attitude, and the most frequent comment that I hear is that everybody who serves alcohol should have to take this class. I had no idea of the things that you told me. So I do feel very good about the class, and I feel like it's working. I don't think we think anything about training for most positions. Of course, I came up in a career where there was training for everything that you did, and I think most of us take training for granted. But most of the people that are selling and serving alcohol are waiters, are waitresses, and clerks in various stores. And I frequently get people in this class who are mandated to be there, and the, the biggest comment that I get from them is, "I wished I'd had this class before I got cited. I wished I'd had this information, had never had to go through this," because here's people, here are people that are making minimum wage, many of them, and now they're having to hire attorneys to defend them in court for their criminal citations, or they're being sued civilly. So it is to their benefit to have this class before they get themselves into that situation. STAR training really is, for these people, for our waitresses, our waiters, and our services, this really is their tool of their trade, and this gives them the tools to do their job properly. And if we, if they don't do their job within the law, and most of them just want to know how to do it, they just haven't been trained. They're showed how to use the cash register, they're showed how to do everything, except they're, they may be told, "You don't serve anyone under 21," but they're not taught how to find out if someone is presenting a fake ID. They're not taught how to recognize a good identification. They're not taught what to look for if someone's come in, certain behaviors to look for to not serve that person, and then how to handle that situation, because it can be a difficult thing for them to handle that situation. thing for them to handle that situation as well. So if they don't do their job within the law, then there's really stiff consequences for them. There's stiff consequences for the business owners. This fine has now been raised on first offense to $1,800, and you can train a lot of people with STAR for one offense of a violation. So really, it is to their benefit. And I feel like that if they are not trained and they don't do their job in accordance with the law, then not only is it detrimental to them, it's detrimental to the business owner, and it's detrimental to the members of the community as a whole. Because as a result of that, we get minors that have alcohol in their hands, we end up with wrecks, and we end up with a lot of bad incidences. So it's really to protect everybody, you know, starting with the employee, everybody down to the community. So I really do support the program. And now that I've been, I've always been involved on the other side of alcohol after they've had too much and they've been over-served. That's been my experience with alcohol until I came on board with this program. I have two sons, and one of those is underage, so I have a real passion for this, and I truly believe in the program, and I hope you'll give it some serious consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy. There's just a couple more things. This is what each student is provided with, and that is in your pocket. And then we'd be glad to take any questions either now, or you're welcome to call me at the office or call Sandy if you want to call Sandy if you have questions about it. Thank you all.
Any questions, Commissioner?
I would just like to thank you, Sandy Watts, and former Police Chief Sandy Jocelyn for taking your time to come over and speak to us and educate us about the STAR training. And with 52 communities in Kentucky in the last 10, 11 years passing ordinances, and I'm certainly supportive of it, obviously, and what I'm coming from is to save lives. And when people are over-served, I've been supporting this since the year I brought up this topic, and we had like 10 automobile accidents where the person on the way home from a bar had had an automobile accident and died in the accident, and the alcohol overconsumption, being over-served was the factor. And so I'm just about trying to save lives and make it a safer community, and I think this ordinance along this line to require this training would do just that.
More questions?
I did have one question, but then I noticed it in the packet. It answered it about how do you enforce the compliance, and that would be you?
No.
No, who?
Well, I can address that, only because once a local ordinance is written, it's enforced by the local community. And that's been one of the questions when people started passing these ordinances. And the easiest way I've seen it to happen actually happens in Frankfurt. The local administrator in Frankfurt, when people come to renew their license in Frankfurt, which they have to do once a year, he requires them to bring their folder that shows the employee's training record. And if they don't have their folder, or if he knows that's a business that has more employees than what's in the folder or whatever, they don't get their alcohol license until they have proven that they've trained. Really, enforcement has not seemed to be a problem from what I've heard in the state office. But they do it different ways, and that would be up to you all. Owensboro keeps a log, which I think would be a little bit more labor-intensive to do that. I don't know that there would be a reason to do that, but if you all thought it would, you could do that.
It would be self-enforcing, is what she is saying, because in order to get that re-license, they would have to have their training records. And as you all know, I'm probably not a proponent of trying to make more work for the police department or anyone who's already overtaxed. So I see this as something that basically corrects itself and runs itself. And again, it's to the businesses' benefit, and we do have a lot of businesses here that do this regularly because of the tax and the insurance incentives that come with it. And when I talked with Donnie Woods today, he was saying that when he talked to a lot of the business owners when he goes out to do his initial visit, they ask about where they can get training, and they seem to be in support of it. Because obviously, a first offense for them is an $1,800 fine. Most of them have no problem with sending their employees to a class. And I may have a class with 25 to 30 employees, say, from, can I mention a name? Say, Wavers Ho-Sell or someplace like that, and they'll just rotate them around. Maybe one, three months, they'll send a few employees from one area, and another three months, they'll send a few employees. And they do lose a few employees, and then they, if they've got 60 to 90 days or whatever you put in your ordinance, they've got that much time. So usually, if they're going to lose an employee, they lose them on the front end of that before they ever get them trained. And some businesses have told me, or the managers have told me, that what they will do is, hey, if I get an employee on board and they stay with me six months, and then they decide to move on to another job, I just, you know, I've paid for it. But if they leave me before that six-month period, if they come to work for me and I train them, and two weeks later they leave, that $35 comes out of their last paycheck. Their certificate belongs to the employee. It doesn't belong to the business. It belongs to the employee. In other counties where I have taught, I've had many people come in for the classes that are actually paying for the certificate themselves because they want to keep that, and then they can take that with them to any job that they go to. And it gives them a little edge. If they're applying for a waitress at a restaurant and they've already got their STAR certificate, then that gives them a little bit of an advantage.
How frequently are these classes taught in Western Kentucky? Once a month?
Okay, that's a good question. We schedule the classes according to the demand. So right now in Paducah, we schedule them every three months because there are not a lot of people who are requesting the class. If we do have a request, we'll go in and do a private, or we'll schedule another class.
Okay.
So I usually have a full class in Paducah at least once every three months. And then sometimes they are, you might bring up also that at least sometimes these classes are mandated if they have violations.
Yeah, I did say, and thank you, Sandy, I did say that it's not a statute that they have to train. However, if a business was cited for selling to a minor, a lot of times, our legal department will, or our ABC Board will mandate that they go through STAR training. Sometimes they'll give them a reduction in their fine if they'll train everybody in their business through STAR.
And that's where I think a lot of them are seeing, that if I train my employees up front, I don't have to go through all this mess. I already have my people trained, and it's, we don't get into violations and fines. And I think most of the people that are serving want to do it correctly.
They do.
And most of them are just unaware of a lot of the things that they can do to protect themselves. Most of them are unaware that they are at risk themselves for the criminal liability. And when they find out that they can be held criminally liable if they sell to someone underage, they're paying a whole lot more attention to what they're doing. They take it a lot more serious. In Donnie Woods's word, once they realize that they could be cited to court and it's going to cost them money, which they're not making a lot of to start with in the positions they're in, they're a lot more willing to check those IDs and be more cautious. So he feels that compliance rates are a lot better when people go to the STAR training.
Do you have, in other communities, people who work festivals and volunteers that also, how is that handled?
That's a good question. We do have what we call a special events training. It's basically this STAR program that we have reduced to an hour. And what we do is we'll send somebody from our office in to train the volunteers if they request, and we cover the highlights, which are what to look for with somebody intoxicated and just the down and dirty of giving them the highlights of the program. It does not come with a certification.
Okay.
But we'll come and train them.
But Sandy Jocelyn, you have all those answers to all these questions, correct?
I have answers.
She does.
I have answers, I know where to find them.
Okay.
Okay.
Because the next step, if we decided to do that, I guess, would be to draft an ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah, I would suggest looking at some of these other ordinances and talk to some people in some other areas. I know in this area, is it Murray City or Callaway County has an ordinance?
Murray and Masonville, both do.
Uh-huh. And if you'd like, I've got all of the ordinances at the office. If you want more to look at, I'll be glad to provide you more. Just let me know.
Owensboro's ordinance, they're a similar size to our city. It'd be a good one to look at. But I think these are doable, and you all have the power to kind of word them and write them the way you want. But a lot of these people will never get the opportunity to have the training if they're not mandated, I'm afraid. Most people are unaware that the training is available. And if they're, most of the people that come to my classes are there because their employer sent them there, either because it was mandated or for insurance purposes, these people don't even have any knowledge of this class, that it even exists. So by mandate, businesses are going to have some responsibility to get their employees in there, and that helps protect the employee and themselves as well.
So is everyone in favor of getting an ordinance drafted?
Yes.
The city manager and the attorney?
Yes.
All right, we'll start working on that. Thank you.
Thank you all, and please call if you have questions.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Y'all both.
Okay. Commissioner Abraham, you have the minutes?
Yes. I move that the reading of the minutes for February 21st and March 6th, 2012 meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye.
Okay, we have Commissioner Galt.
We have an appointment, I think.
Oh, the appointments, all right. Whereas upon the recommendation of Mayor Paxton, I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Valerie Pollard and Buford Wilson as members of the Paducah-McCracken County Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency. These terms will expire February 23rd, 2016.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Paxton in reappointing Valerie Pollard and Buford Wilson as members of the Paducah-McCracken County Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye.
Whereas upon the recommendation of Mayor Paxton, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Christopher B. Jones as a member of the Historical and Architectural Review Commission. This term will expire June 4th, 2015.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Paxton in appointing Christopher B. Jones as a member of the Historical and Architectural Review Commission.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye.
Whereas upon the recommendation of Mayor Paxton, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Carol Young as a member of the Board of Adjustment to replace Sarah Binham, who has resigned. This term will expire August 31st, 2015.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Paxton in appointing Carol Young as a member of the Board of Adjustments.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye.
Whereas upon the recommendation of Mayor Paxton and jointly the McCracken County Judge Executive, I move that the Board of Commissioners hereby appoint Bill Bartleman and Scott Taylor as members of the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Center Corporation. These terms will expire January 1st, 2015.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Paxton and jointly with the McCracken County Judge Executive in appointing Bill Bartleman and Scott Taylor as members of the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Center Corporation.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on into our motions with Commissioner Galt.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application in all...
It's, I think we're down here to receiving filed documents on motions, right here.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So that's Commissioner Watkins.
Yeah. I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed under documents, insurance certificates and continuation certificate, contracts, agreements, COVAC Mobile Equipment Corporation Change Order Number One for the fire rescue vehicle, City of Paducah County of McCracken and Paducah-McCracken County Riverport Authority, First Amendment to Interlocal Corporative Agreement with respect to a certain tract of real property located at 2308 South Fourth Street in Paducah. Encroachment agreement between the City of Paducah and Neale C. and Ronaty Ward for property located at 2429 Bridge Street, Paducah. JSC Terminal LLC doing business as Midwest Terminal Agreement for the City of Paducah's fuel supply for the 2012-2013 calendar years. A quitclaim deed between the City of Paducah and Paducah Independent School District Finance Corporation for a portion of a 20-foot unimproved alley line between Adam Street and Jackson Street. The Transit Authority, the City of Paducah Financial Statements Auditor's Report for the year ended June 30th, 2011. Paducah Water Financial Highlights for January 2012. Notice of Cancellation, the meeting for Tuesday, February 28th, 2012, for the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah. There are bids, Engineering Public Works Department for limestone, equipment rental, street resurfacing, and concrete.
Second.
Let me call the row, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye.
On to municipal orders. Commissioner Abraham?
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application in all documents necessary for a reimbursement grant in an amount up to $20,000 through the Kentucky Justice Cabinet for a 2012-2013 Law Enforcement Service Fee Grant Award for the Paducah Police Department to operate a one-year DUI enforcement program be adopted.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler?
Aye.
We'll go into our ordinances introduction, and we do not vote on these, correct?
That's correct.
Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Section 1891 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. An ordinance amending buildings and building regulations for the City of Paducah by adopting the most recent addition of the state building and residential codes and reducing the number of Building Code Appeals Board members from seven to five.
Second. Greg, you want to come on up? What we're doing, bringing forward tonight is something that's going to make Paducah more business-friendly but still keep us in compliance?
Yes, ma'am. What we're doing is looking at changing the ordinance that pertains to all conduit in the City of Paducah. It has to be all electrical in the business building, has to be in steel conduit. What this proposal will do will be the use of metal clad cable, known as MC cable in the industry. It'll make it more user-friendly, it'll be more cost-efficient for the business and the contractors. It's still a safe method to do this. It is approved in every city around the country. It's in the 2011 Electrical Code, approved method.
And when I showed this to my husband, who is an electrical contractor, he certainly, you know, agreed with this, that it is very safe, much easier to work with, and certainly would make jobs move along a lot faster.
Right, it's going to be beneficial to the contractors and the customers also.
Any discussion?
No, thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Section 126-117, Planned Office Park, Pop of, Chapter 126 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That Section 126-117, Planned Office Park of Chapter 126 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky is hereby amended to allow nursing homes as a principal use in the Planning Office Park Zone and allow other similar principal permitted use with Planning Commission approval.
Second. Steve?
Yes, there's two different additions to the Planned Office Park. The first, as was said, was the nursing home, which would be principally permitted, and the second is any other use listed, not listed, that the Planning Commission can approve. What that does is, in the future, if a use comes along, that the GPDC Board thinks it's What that does is, in the future, if a use comes along, that the GPDC Board thinks it's a good idea, as well as the planning commission, the planning commission has the authority to give approval for that use without actually having to do another text amendment. And we find that pretty much in all of our zones right now, it just was not in the P O P zone. So that's not something that you typically do not see in the zoning ordinance.
Any questions for Steve?
No.
It's pretty self-explanatory.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
We'll move on with Commissioner Galt.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the amendment to the letter of agreement entered into between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the Housing Authority of Paducah dated May 27th, 2009, and waiving a certain condition precedent to the closing of the acquisition of certain property located off of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows, this ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky to enter into an amendment to the letter of agreement dated May 26th, 2009, wherein the City of Paducah, Kentucky will acquire all right, title, and interest of Housing Authority of Paducah, H A P pursuant to the terms and conditions of the amendment to letter of agreement, and into the real property located off Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Paducah-McCracken County, Kentucky, for the purpose specified therein, and further authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky to consummate the acquisition of the Martin Luther King Jr. Drive property in order to accomplish the goals of the Fountain Avenue Neighborhood Revitalization Plan.
Second.
Steve?
That's a rough overview, Cal is here this evening, and I'm going to let him speak to how this came about. So, Cal, if you'd like to come up.
Welcome, Cal.
We're doing so well with your resolution, all we needed was a second. Thanks, Steve. As you all know, this has been going on for at least three years prior to...
Cal, speaking of the microphone, please.
I do have a soft voice.
People at home can't hear.
Oh. Before our new city manager came on board, we were dealing with Mr. Zumwalt and many of the city commissioners before in the construction of H.C. Mathis. And what you probably don't remember, three years ago, H.C. Mathis property belonged to the City of Paducah, and we talked with then Zumwalt and the mayor about the possibility of trading H.C. Mathis for our property located over there on Martin Luther King. We'd already given you all the six acres for a dollar. And it seemed like a pretty good idea, we needed some economic development, H.C. Mathis and 14th, and we went ahead after we got the approval from the city that you would donate the property or transfer the title for an even swap. We had to go through HUD and get an approval of a demolition contract and a disposition approval as well, to dispose of the property to the city as part of the transfer to the H.C. Mathis. The initial, initially, I had talked to Mayor Paxton and Jim Zumwalt at that time, that the city would take the property, even the demolish it, and when that time came to give you the property, this is three years ago now, so it's hard to remember all the details. It got into a situation where the city was having some difficulty financing some other major demolition going along the river. And so he told me, he said, if there's any way you could do that, we could do that, and that action got captured in the agreement. I don't think it really was meant to be in the agreement, but it got in the agreement that we had agreed we'd also tear it down when we transfer it to you. And I did budget a substantial amount of money for demolition. And then what happened is we had some major overruns, as you all know, at H.C. Mathis to the tune of about $290,000, and overruns at Anderson of several hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we had to take all of our demolition money and reallocate it, and so there was no money. In 2011, HUD wrote me a letter and said, "You can't use any of your federal funds to demolish the 16 units per the disposition agreement with the city." And so that's what then brought forth this resolution today, is that we're not allowed to spend federal dollars to do the demolition. I was actually going to bury the cost originally in our grant from a long time ago, but that kind of money got used for those cost overruns. So, in discussing it with Steve, and Jeff kind of came in on the tail end of it. We thought we'd come back to the city commission and say, "We want to give you that property, but the city's going to have to go ahead and follow through with the approval from the government, which says I cannot use federal funds and give it to you as is, and then you can do with the property whatever you please." And so that's kind of the history of this resolution. Steve asked me to comment a little bit on the, of the cost of demolition. I think somewhere around $3,000 to $4,000 per unit is what it's going to cost. So you can do the math yourself, there's 16 units over there, $3,000 to $4,000 a unit is eventually what the city may have to pay in order to demolish those units. But since I can't use federal funds, I know you still want the property, it's still part of our agreement. And so today's purpose of this resolution is to amend the agreement where you would take title as is and then deal with the property as best you can. Any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners? Comments?
None at this time.
Well, I guess, I'm a little confused, there's, there was $230,000 something thousand worth of overruns, correct?
$290,000 overruns in H.C. Mathis, yes. That was because we had those basements that we didn't know were on the property, even though we did an engineering survey, they must have missed it.
And we're looking at about $90,000 probably to tear these units down?
No, I think somewhere probably between 30 and 48. It just depends on who...
Well, I'm just saying hypothetically, if, you know, we always have, it never comes in exactly where... Yeah, it's always more than they think, so if we just double it to be safe.
But it seems to be a situation where unforeseen things happened.
That's it, and if it had not been for HUD, reading the agreement very closely for the federal approval of this, not the part of the city commission, where it very specifically said that in the disposition, which is giving you the buildings as is, no federal funds could be used for demolition. And we would have never even talked about us doing any demolition had it not been for that major problem on the river.
But was it HUD, was it HUD actually that agreed to do the demolition, or was it the housing authority?
It came from a, HUD was not involved in that part of the agreement, it was an agreement. It was, it came out of a friendly discussion with the then city manager, Jim Zumwalt, and Mayor Paxton, when Mayor Paxton said, "We haven't got the money to demolish those buildings over there, is there some way you could work it out?" And I kind of nonchalantly said, "Yeah, I think I could probably bury the cost in my other demolition work, you're not having any problem." But all that money got reallocated because of all the cost overruns, and there wasn't any. And then in 2011, HUD actually said to us that we cannot use any of our federal funds for demolition on those units we're going to give to the city.
But I think what I'm hearing you say is, the bottom line is, it's an agreement between the housing authority and the City of Paducah.
That's correct.
And you just simply don't have the money to do it, so you're expecting us to absorb that cost?
Exactly, yep.
I just wanted to be clear.
That's the bottom line.
I have a question. The survey that the housing authority performed on that property, you said you missed, you missed basements, concrete?
You're talking about H.C. Mathis, yes.
Right.
Yes, the engineering study did not reveal the extent of the removal of the debris that was buried under that property. It not only cost us $390,000 additional, it also cost us four apartments out there as well. And so, in order to make up the shortfalls, we had to use other capital grant funds that had come to bear that the mayor and I had kind of tentatively agreed that, you know, we would try to use those for demolition if we could. And just so happens that the money ran out, and then HUD got involved, and they enforced our approval with the federal government. And that's when they said, and that's when I told Steve, "We really need to transfer this property to you guys in accordance with the federal approval of disposition," which was to give it to you as is, because that was the like value, not demolished, but the like value for the property at H.C. Mathis.
Well, Cal, let me ask this question, if we all vote no, what are you going to do?
Guess you won't take title to the property. I did offer an alternative to the city commission, not the city commission, but to Steve, is that we had another interested not-for-profit group that wanted to turn it into a different kind of housing. And we can't use it for public housing anymore, it's going to have to be done, something's going to have to be done with it.
But we have an agreement, is what I'm saying, we have an agreement, and we don't amend the agreement, you need to tear down the property. I mean, do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, I understand what you're saying, but if there's, if I can't use federal funds, there are, there are no other federal funds that are available. Housing Authority has no other funds, other than what we get from Uncle Sam. And like I said, you have to understand, and again, it's a long story how we got to this point. It would have never even got into the document had Mr. Paxton said that you guys couldn't take it and tear it down yourself. And that's when we kind of volunteered, and that got captured in the document, a statement by me that said, "Well, Bill, I'll try to do my very best to tear these down." And we did have money until we ran into these overruns in other areas, and then it just didn't happen.
Is the housing authority a 501(c) what? What kind of corporation are you?
We're a C.
C what, C3, C4, C7, C6? C3? Okay.
Actually, we, we have two components, organized under KRS, is a not-for-profit corporation, but we're also a 501(c)(3).
501(c)(3)?
Yes.
Okay.
We have both.
Cal, how many new apartments do you have over on H.C. Mathis?
28.
Are they all occupied now?
Hundred percent occupied, occupied within the first two weeks.
But y'all had to pay for all the cost overruns over there, right?
Yes, sir, we did.
And the, I was going to ask, it sounds like they are, the buildings that we're, have gotten as far as the trade. I mean, the condition of them is they could be used for something else, as long as it's not public housing. I mean, they're not...
They can be, they can be, the approval from HUD is disposition to the City of Paducah. If the City of Paducah refuses them, then I would suppose that we could give them to any not-for-profit.
But they're in a condition that they could be utilized for some purpose then, right? I mean, they're...
Yes, we had a group approach us on that, to use them for a veterans' purpose, create veterans' housing. And then we had one of our people to contact Steve and talk about the possibility of using for veteran housing. But I don't think that fits in with what the plans are for, for that part of the city.
Well, I thought according to the ordinance that was passed, that, I mean, that property was given to us.
Yep, you have to take it under disposition, right.
In exchange, and with the understanding that they would be torn down. So, I mean...
We would get the property, but it would be...
And see, that's the like value, the property is the like value of H.C. Mathis. And that was one of the deals that HUD made us also put in the agreement that they approved was, is that the value of H.C. Mathis, not H.C. Mathis, but the part property on Martin Luther King be of equal value to the unimproved property that you guys gave. And they were very close in assessed value. So we were giving you like value to begin with. And like I say, the whole issue got confused when money was short for the...
So it's ours, I mean...
It will be yours when you accept title.
Okay, so it wasn't ours with the agreement?
No, ma'am, it has to go through literally a deed transfer.
Steve, do you have anything else to say? Because I really thought, you know, once we traded that property, it was ours.
No, the letter of agreement said within a certain time period that the Paducah Housing Authority had to raise those structures and then transfer that property to the City of Paducah. And that's what this amendment is before you tonight, is to amend that, to take the requirement out that those structures be raised before the transfer to the City of Paducah.
It's essentially a contract between the two of us, and it has some stipulations. And what he's saying is, is that one of those stipulations he can't do. So they want to know if we want to go ahead with the contract and remove that stipulation, correct?
Because of the override.
Right. Well, basically because he couldn't get approval to tear them down.
Be sure of the copy of the...
Sorry.
Yeah.
Be sure of the copy of the disapproval letter with Steve Irwin. I presume that you saw it too, the city manager, where HUD said, "You cannot use any federal funds on it in accordance with the original agreement." It was approved by what we call the SAC, S A C. And like I say, this would have never ever happened had I not been asked to tear it down, and that's what got captured into a later agreement.
Well, Steve, do you think you can market that property? It's right there in Fountain Avenue.
Certainly, I mean, it's, it's a nice piece of property in Fountain Avenue that we could certainly market, yes.
I think at one time, there was a developer for the six acres that we gave you right beside it, who commented that he wouldn't build on that piece of property if public housing was right next door. And I don't know if that guy from Florida or not really said that, but it's what I was told, that it had an impact on him.
My question isn't about the piece of property, I'm sure that Steve can market it. I'm just having a little trouble with your problem becoming our liability. I'm getting, I think I'm beginning to get my back up with every time someone has a problem, they come to the city to bail them out. And I'm, you know, I understand the problem, don't misunderstand what I'm saying, but I know that... Okay. I'm going to be quiet now.
Well, we, we don't have to tear it down if we take ownership of it. We can just sit on it and see if there are some, I'm sure there are some groups that would like, some nonprofits that would, would be interested in...
Or the developer of the six acres who would also want that piece of property.
Sure, would want to take possession of that property.
Take the whole thing for free, tear it down himself and develop it. I mean, it's like a six acres we got over there, we've got all these improvements that cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars on the sewer lines and the sidewalks and everything that goes around that property. You know, it's unfortunate that, that I yielded a little bit three years ago when the city was having a problem with demolition and even agreed to try to incorporate that into our cost, I didn't say it. That's what got captured into the agreement, it was never really intended to be that way. But it got caught into it, and then Steve reminded me, he said, "Oh, you said you would tear it down?" And I said, "No, I didn't." Then I gave him the history like I've given you all, is that it came out of a discussion with the mayor, Mr. Zumwalt at that time, that we would try to tear it down. And because of all these other cost overruns and lack of federal funding, cut 20% last year, 20% this year, we just haven't got the money to tear it down.
I would think, well, the missions in Paducah would be interested in that property. I'm sure a number of people probably would be.
Of course, it can be, it could be renovated.
But I think, Gerald, the point was to find a developer there in Fountain Avenue. I mean, that's been the point, is the location and where it is, and...
We do have a redevelopment plan that shows how we're wanting to redevelop that property, plus the six acres, and it shows a mixture of, of commercial and residential. So, and also, as we started into this process, we had an architect and some people from our building inspection office tour those facilities. And I think it was everybody's opinion that those structures, the rehabilitation costs would far exceed the value of that, of those structures. So, it was a recommendation that everybody that was present at that time, that those structures actually be taken down.
Okay. Well, when we have a developer who, who is interested over there, then, then obviously it would be in our interest to take it down, take it down for $48,000 or whatever.
It might be cheaper than that, I don't know, that's just conjecture, although we already had some cost estimates.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more comments? All right, let's go on to Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, amending Article 5 Development Permits of Chapter 50 Floods of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows, amending Chapter 50, Article 5, for the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, of the City to establish a special flood hazard area development application fee of $100 and establish a one-year expiration date from the date of issuance of the special flood hazard area development permit.
Second. Rick?
Brief explanation of this, Mayor Pro Tim and Commission, is that in November, excuse me, in October of 2011, we introduced a new flood ordinance based on the new flood maps that were coming out. We also have additional regulations for, I guess, flood main, flood plain administration for this. And as a result of that, for developers doing larger projects, they have to send an entirely separate set of plans for their erosion sedimentation control and flood plain management plan. And so, we're actually amending the ordinance to set the permit up and set a permit fee of $100 for that. So that's what the basis of that, I guess, text change is.
Any comments?
Nope.
Questions for, for Rick? All right, thanks, Rick. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 2006117213, entitled authorizing the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to act on behalf of the city for revitalization of the Fountain Avenue Phase 1 project. This ordinance is summarized as follows, amending ordinance to allow the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to act on behalf of the city to approve and authorize expenditures for the revitalization of the Fountain Avenue Phase 1 project in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second.
We're finished up with the acquisition phase of Fountain Avenue, now we're getting into the construction phase. Basically, what this is, is for properties that we deem that need some type of emergency help, whether they need a new roof, need some exterior rehab to the structure. This ordinance would allow Urban Renewal, after going through the city's procurement procedures, to actually award the contract to a... to actually award the contract to a developer to make those rehabilitation improvements. Typically, two, maybe three a year, depending upon the amount that has been budgeted for the project.
Any comments? So, this would, Steve, this would be done through grants?
No, this would be...
To apply for grants?
No, the existing ordinance allows for purchasing property up to $50,000 to apply for grants and to basically run the program. What this would allow Urban to do is to actually, to pick the bidder that would be awarded the contract for the rehabilitation, exterior rehabilitation of the structure.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Abraham, I think you have... Is that F?
F. Yes.
We know, we're on F-one.
Commissioner Gault? Did he do this one?
I'm sorry.
This is, all four of these go underneath that one.
Oh.
It's F-one, two, three, because there's several contracts.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, contracts for engineering, public works for the following. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid for the city of Paducah's calendar years 2012 and 2013 concrete program and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah accepts the bid of Harper Construction LLC for the calendar years 2012 and 2013 concrete program at the unit prices and hourly rates listed below and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. The contract has a one-year renewal option ending December 31st, 2014, upon mutual agreement by the city and Harper Construction. The prices are as follows, concrete removal and replacement. Item number one, description, curb and gutter remove and construct. Unit linear foot, unit bid price $37.75. Number two, curb and gutter, new construction, linear foot, $22.26. Number three, concrete sidewalk, square yard, $57.40. Number four, concrete sidewalk, new construction, square yard, $42.80. Number four, or number five, concrete handicap ramp, square yard, $62. Number six, concrete entrance pavement, square yard, $61.25. Number seven, concrete entrance pavement, square yard, $65.90. Concrete entrance pavement M-mix, square yard? What's the M?
The M-mix is a tin bag mix of concrete, because if we need to put in an entrance that we have to get traffic back on it in 24 hours, we'll put a, a high, higherly strength concrete in so we can put traffic back on it. We do that on rare occasions, but sometimes we're trying to be business friendly to keep people in and out of their businesses. A regular, a regular Class A mix, you can't put traffic on it. You can put it on in three days, but we don't like to do it for seven days. Imagine not being able to have business for three to seven days. So, the M-mix lets that, higherly strength set up, and the business can move on.
Okay.
It's not done for all of them, though, it's very rare.
$73.25. Concrete entrance pavement M-mix, square yard, $78.25. Granite curb reset with new concrete gutter, gutter, linear foot, $44.06. Gutter replacement, granite curb in place, linear foot, $36.55. Concrete barrier medium, square yard, $74. Concrete header curb, linear foot, $27.75. Concrete header curb, linear foot, $35.50. Non-reinforced concrete, square yard, $60.50. Inlet repair each, $781.50. Reinforced concrete, new construction, Class A, cubic yard, $1,000. Deep saw cut, linear foot, $6. Perforated pipe, linear foot, $16.25. Um, track hoe, $120 an hour. Backhoe, $95 an hour. Compact roller, $79 an hour. Dump truck, $92.50 an hour. Backhoe with breaker, $100 an hour. Small dozer, $122 an hour. Laborer, $58.50 an hour.
Second.
All right, any questions on that?
I apologize.
We're getting ready for spring and summer, right?
Well, that's what we're trying to do. That's, but I apologize for these ordinances.
All those things people call us about?
Yep. Things we're trying to get, I guess, get started for the construction season. The weather's more than cooperating with us right now with this mild, mild winter we're having. So, we're, we're just trying to get going.
It started early this year.
And the trees are already blooming. I believe the dogwoods are gonna be bloomed and just leaves by the time quilters get here.
All right. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Danny Copan Sons Excavating LLC for rental of various equipment for the 2012 and 2013 calendar years and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah accepts the bid of Danny Copan Sons Excavating LLC for rental of various equipment for the 2012 and 2013 calendar years at the hourly rates listed below and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. The contract has a one-year renewal option ending December 31st, 2014, upon mutual agreement by the city and Danny Copan Sons Excavating. The hourly rates are as follows, tractor scraper, $65 an hour. Tandem axle dump truck, $58 an hour. Tri-axle dump truck, $75 an hour. Excavator, $100. Backhoe, $45. Track loader, $30. Compact track loader, $70. Motor grader, $45. Small vibratory, vibratory roller, $28. Large vibratory roller, $40. Dozer, $90. A large dozer, $105. Crane, $50. Hydro cedar, $43. Small paver with four-person crew, four-person crew, $165. Labor, $30. And landfill disposal fee, $50.
Second. Okay, Rick?
One thing I'd like to, I guess, explain to you all and the viewing public, in case there's people out there that might be concerned, Commissioner, um, I'm having a name thing. Carol, Commissioner Carol Gault, just read a, I'm, I'm sorry, a fifty-something. Read a, uh, ordinance where she's talking about equipment rental in this contract and equipment rental in that contract. Some people might say, "Why do you have the two?" The reason you have the two is for like, if the concrete work is, is taking place, we might need some immediate work done rather than scheduling two contractors at one location. You know, you come and then you get out of the way, and then he comes, and then he gets out of the way. We try to set that up for the best efficiency of the contractor and for the citizens and, and our work such that it can be done quickly and efficiently and out of the way. These things are done separately. I don't want to think that we have multiple contractors doing the same thing when we don't. I hope that was clear as mud, I'm sorry.
No, it was, it was appropriate.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC for the city of Paducah's calendar years 2012 and 2013 street resurfacing program and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, accepting the bid of Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC for the city of Paducah's calendar years 2012 and 2013 street resurfacing program and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This contract has one-year renewable option ending December 31st, 2014, upon mutual agreement by the city and Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC. The unit bid prices are as follows. Item one, about two-minute surface base, unit ton, unit price, $79.90. Item two, milling texture, one ton, unit bid price, $47.50. Item three, traffic signal loop wire, linear foot, uh, unit bid price, $2.50. Item four, traffic signal loop, saw, slot, and fill, linear foot, unit bid price, $16. And item number five, shoulder construction, one ton, unit bid price, $37.
Second. Okay, Rick. We're talking about resurfacing streets now.
This is the blacktop part, yes.
And, you know, I'm sure we all, all of us get calls about different streets around town that people want to have resurfaced, and, and I know you have a plan. And would you explain that a little bit?
Typically, what we do, we have all, we have approximately 223 miles of streets in Paducah. And we have those streets ranked from one to five, where one being those that need the most attention and five being those that have just recently been resurfaced or need no attention at all. What we try to do is we try to concentrate on the ones and twos. And the way I, the way we approach this is that everybody would like to have a perfect street, but we can't afford that. And then the other thing is, is that I try to have it where the plan, we would have a C or a C+, if you think about it that way. Whereas, all of our streets are not As, but all of them are not failing either, because that's about what we, about what we can afford as a community. And so, we look at trying to keep those streets that are in the ones and the twos, get those to fives, but whereas we have an overall average of about a three on all of our streets, if you understand what I'm, I'm trying to say. That being the case, from our gas tax monies that we receive from the state, the monies that the general fund supplements, that, those gas tax monies, we try to take about one to 1.2 million dollars a year and make, I guess, the best bang for the buck. And we try to distribute that in all areas of town. A lot of times, a lot of people would like for us to come to their neighborhood and do the entire neighborhood. But if we were to do that, we would spend all of our money in one place, and then that would not be equitable to the other citizens that live in Paducah. So, we try to spread that out and hit those twos in all areas of town. And then that way, everybody gets some benefit from the, from the paving dollars that we spend every year. And that's the way we treat the entire contract. We don't necessar, it's not necessarily, I would say, let's make a phone call driven. Some people would like to have their streets paved just because it's bleached out, but structurally it's sound, but it's not black. It's, it's not as black as the other streets. Well, that's not a reason to pave the street. There's all kinds of various reasons. It's when, it's when the street starts to fail that we could have damage to cars, damage to utilities, that we, we start looking at that, so. And the money doesn't cover all the ones and the twos. We have over $15 million worth of ones and twos if I were to take all of them, add them up. And we're doing a million, million, two a year. So, you can kind of understand, if you got $15 million a problem and you got a million, million, two, that's 15 years before you could even deal with all the ones and twos. So, we have to be very selective. And then also, those, those that get the most traffic on them. You might have a neighborhood that's got a bad street, and there's no doubt it's a bad street, but maybe it's serving two or three people. Whereas, you might have a street like Broadway that's serving the entire community, that gets several thousand cars a day on it. We'll focus more on those that where we get the bigger bang for the buck, for the people that are traveling on those streets, thousands of cars a day versus one, one and two cars a day. And sometimes that doesn't set well with individuals, but again, we try to manage it that way.
I think your method is working great, Rick. Uh, the, I think our streets in particular are in excellent condition. Uh, and the ones that needed to be addressed the most, you've taken care of them, I've noticed, in driving around town. And, and I can't think of a bad street in the city limits. I think the two worst ones that we had, and people don't realize, but they've been addressed by the state of Kentucky, and that was Jackson Street, the Belt Line, and Kentucky Avenue. Those are both state roads, so we don't, we don't keep those roads up. But they have made tremendous improvements on Jackson Street, and they fixed the worst spots on Kentucky Avenue, but that's gonna need to be addressed again. But that's the state of Kentucky, that's not the city of Paducah. I think personally, the streets and the city limits of Paducah that we're responsible for, Rick is on top of them, and they're in excellent condition.
Well, actually, I'd like to share a story, share a brief, brief story. The work that you saw on 28th Street in front of Noble Park, and also the work that you saw on Jackson Street there, just, just past the Belt Line. That was actually the state operations trying to model what we do in Paducah. I mean, literally, model what we do. They asked for our specs, we gave it to them, they put out a contract for that. The State Office of Procurement has come back now and said, "You all are overusing that, that contract." I've learned this yesterday. And that they didn't mean for that contract to be that way. They felt like those contracts needed to be designed and developed and bid. And so, they have since, just, I guess, stopped doing that kind of work as we are doing continuously. And I, I've just learned that today. And I'm like saying, that's sad, because you can't do work effectively and efficiently that way if you have to back up and look at a street block by block by block. And they're having to go back to that way because of Central Office has pretty much let the District Office know that was not the intent of that contract, which is, it's... So, there, I don't think we'll see much more work like that from the state, on state roads, but we'll continue to do it on city roads.
Right. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Pine Bluff Sand and Gravel Company for sale to the city of its requirement of limestone for the 2012 and 2013 calendar years and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah accepts the bid of Pine Bluff Sand and Gravel Company for sale to the city of its requirement of limestone for the 2012 and 2013 calendar years and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. The contract has a one-year renewal option ending December 31st, 2014, upon mutual agreement by the city and Pine Bluff Sand and Gravel Company. The unit prices are as follows. Description, number 11, delivered bid amount, $14.25. Picked up bid amount, $12.25. Number three, delivered bid amount, $13.25. Picked up bid amount, $11.75. Number 57, $13.25. Picked up bid amount, $11.75. Number 68, delivered bid amount, $13.50. Picked up bid amount, $12. Description, number 9M, delivered bid amount, $14.25. Picked up bid amount, $12.50. DGA, delivered bid amount, $13. Picked up bid amount, $10.75. DGA pugged, $13.50. Picked up bid amount, $11.25. Number 125, riprap, delivered bid amount, $15.75. Picked up bid amount, $13.50. Eight-inch riprap, delivered bid amount, $15.75. Picked up bid amount, $13.50. Eight-inch minus riprap, delivered bid amount, $14.25. Picked up bid amount, $12.50. And a quarter inch times zero, quarter minus?
Yeah. The quarter minus is the stone that you see on the Greenway Trail. It's the biggest stone is a quarter inch to dust, so that's what's on the Greenway Trail.
Delivered bid amount, $13. Picked up bid amount, $10.75.
Second.
Short version of this, these are all the limestone products that we may have a use for during city operations and business.
Okay. Thanks, Rick. Okay. Under the city manager's report tonight is...
Skip another one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Gerald?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement in all documents relating thereto, with the Kentucky League of Cities for a 2012 matching safety grant award. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement in all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky League of Cities for a 2012 matching safety grant award that will reimburse the city $5,150 for the purchase of 63 vehicle backup warning sensors for the Paducah Police Department. The matching funds of $5,150 will be provided through the Fleet Trust Fund.
Second. Chief Perry?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, Steve, and the public. We, we did analysis even a couple of years ago, and we noticed that a lot of our accidents that were occurring, we don't get that many, but we're backup accidents. So, we decided to look at maybe putting some backup sensors on the vehicles, so at least when they're backing up, they get some kind of warning, and hopefully, they won't hit anything. So, that is what this is all about. We asked for the grant, and we were able to get the grant, just needed some matching money to purchase these backup sensors for all the vehicles.
And that would have saved us $500 if my husband had those on his truck when I backed up and hit a bollard?
Uh, probably would have. Well, if you can't get a backup camera, the next best thing to get is a backup sensor.
Any discussion on this?
Are they, what is it, cameras that the officer can see as they're backing up, what's behind them? Is that how it works?
No, we, that's, that's much more expensive. It's just a, a sensor that's right on the back bumper, and it senses anything that's behind it. And then all of a sudden, a, a sound will go off, a beeping noise will go off, which, for also safety purposes and, and the safety of the citizens, we thought it would be a real good, good investment.
Okay.
Don't allow the new vehicles have those on it?
Uh, yes, a lot of new vehicles now have high deck lids in the back, so it's kind of hard to see. Quite frankly, I think all vehicles, and I think it's gonna happen, should have backup cameras. And I think the government is working on that in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, can I go on to the city manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, tonight, under the City Manager's report, we have a preliminary report on Noble Park Swimming Pool renovations, and...
The select button, Steve?
A blank.
A blank button?
Left side.
The what? Left side?
Left side, middle.
Blank. There we go. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, we're happy to make our preliminary report on tonight's, on the Noble Park Pool Rehabilitation Project, that we're scheduling for August, September, initially, initiating for August, September of 2012. And I have with me tonight Jason Peterson and Chad McCann from F&amp;H, who have been, put this report together. And basically, they just wanted to run fairly quickly through what we have to date, and get some guidance from you on other options. As you can tell, it was a WPA project, and it started in the 1930s. At one time, this was a million gallon swimming pool. In the early 70s, F&amp;H worked with the city on its, on one of the major renovations, also reduced the pool size. There's been a renovation, and I think that was 1971, that renovation was. And in 1992, the pool had its current layout. So we've been averaging some sort of renovation. I'm sure there was work done sometime in the 50s. So we're averaging major work about every 20 years on the swimming pool, and we're at that point now. This is the current layout of the pool, with its current piping designs and building layout. That's the pool as it stands, as it's sitting out there right now. Existing liner, that is an aluminum liner. You see the bumps and everything else like that. That's as, just as it does without water in it. That is the gutter, existing gutter system. The, basically, the liner and gutter systems were our, most of our issues right, are right now. As I told you all, we were losing about five or six inches of water a day when we met last June. I really am almost afraid to say what that number is when it comes out to it. Fortunately, we don't have real high water costs here in the city, and we're very fortunate with those utilities. But that averaged 36,000 gallons of water a day, which totaled out over a million. You can see the existing circulation, rust, old pipes, our old filtration systems. You've seen a lot of those in some of those other pictures that I showed you before. This is the existing disinfectant, where chlorine and those types of things. You've seen the cuts in the curbs around there when we had to replace pipes and fix those. Those lovely buildings that we had, being eaten through with the chemicals. This is actually the existing slide. As we've got, you see rust along the stairwells, there's rust in the base of it. This is actually where the stays of, of the framework have pulled away from the slide, right there. These are the recommendations. Now, this is based on the outline of the contract that we have with F&amp;H. They looked at all of these items. And this was part of that initial contract, was to look at these. And in that, they've recommended replacement of the liner system, or the agents, it's not necessar, it's a replacement, it's actually a covering of that lining system, a replacement of the guttering, a replacement of the recirculation system, and then replacement of the filtration system, the disinfectant system, which is chlorine. Replace all the pipes that you had, that you saw on the, on the initial overhead of the pool. Do the minor access into the waiting pool. Replace the buildings, replace the, or rehabilitate the existing slides, and new diving boards, platforms, lifeguard chairs, and lighting improvements. Those lighting improvements will also improve the basketball court lighting, where if you've seen over there, we've got poles that are leaning in, have excess weight on them. This would also replace those and share the three or four light standards with the basketball What this does, and with the improvements, you see the new layout, you see over here in this drawing, a ramping to the baby pool. That is to create, right now, it is not accessible. And we would have to do that in any facility work that we do. We also have to make, do some additional accessibility issues. We have to have two accesses to the large pool. We have a ramp, we will have to put a chairlift. There's chairlifts now required in every facility. This changes our repairs, replaces and repairs new lines that will go to anything. This is the footprint of the new building, new filtration building, and the work there. You can see the X's are things that would be demolished. That's where those buildings are right now. Now, one thing we've talked about is that, when it comes down to it, we would propose a liner system. What is typical of these pools, and we've talked to companies who've worked on repairs on these, is that there is a pitting of the aluminum liner. That is a loss of some water. The gutter system and the piping is the other. And we're looking at a replacement in both of these. This, and I did not bring it with me, this is a vinyl liner that is sprayed on, laid on to it, and what it also does, we don't ever have to paint the pool again. It is a vinyl coated layer that adheres to the aluminum of the pool, the current aluminum liner. Here's the existing gutter. This would be the new gutter system. It would cut the liner right down here, about a foot down, and then lay this new stainless steel liner on top of it. New filtration system, an automated filtration system, where we don't have to get, put people down into the pit to shovel out old debris and everything else like that. This becomes a automated system that saves time, saves energy, and provides a clean, updated pool. Same basic type of filtration system, our disinfectant system with the chlorine and chlorine tablets, but it just comes in on a rack, and we set it in there, and it has the equipment attached to it. And we just hook it up to the current, to the new system. Sample of a building that we, that we would replace it with, we're looking at, trying to, attempting to match the current brick and the green metal roof. That's a larger building that they have. I'm not sure of the exact size of the footprint on the building, but we would also be able to use our storage of our barrels and anything else like that, that wouldn't be outstrewn as you've seen them before. We're looking at the replacement of the slide. There's a couple of different options we would be able to do with this, but at this point, we would look at, this is just a possibility of a, of a sample. The slide is 20 years old. All of those attachments, all of the base is 20 years old, has been there. If we try to salvage that, which is a possibility, but the replacement, the salvage, the repair of that is about 60% of a brand-new slide. So that's why we're looking at the, going ahead and looking at the replacement of the slide. As you go down there, we are looking at a budget for this amount, and now this is generally the same pool that you have, with the works that we have, and our estimated cost is right on budget. That does not provide any contingency funds or anything of that nature. In our general budget discussions, we put that number out of $770,000. They did not work to that budget. That's basically what it turned out to be. We were fortunate with that, and it's just the way it worked out. Now, if you go to that system, your public will see a new slide, and that's about it. That's the only thing that they would see different. And we can do this, and our cost estimates are there, right on, generally right on the money from what we have budgeted. However, when we looked at the system and looked at that, there were other things, the success of the spray ground over at Coleman Park, and some of those came into mind. The, the waiting pool is just a basic waiting pool. I mean, and so, I know the City Manager has discussed with you other options, and this is one that I, we were going to kind of go through that. Other items for discussion, one of the things that we had hoped, other than looking at, was to look at the concession stand. We have not been able to work out those dollars in the base $770,000, but we still think we need to look at that and some improvements in that area. And you'll see by the pictures why. This would be a sample of a spray ground that we could put into that baby pool area. We, the buckets that are similar to what we have at Coleman Park, some of those spray items. We're talking about, for this figure, somewhere in the $120,000 range. You can see the needs of the, by just the front of the concession stand area. How they developed this ramp, I don't know. It was put there, and it goes right in front of the windows, service windows, there's the limited fence, the fence limits the access to it. It's just not a user-friendly facility at that point. And we've got a captive audience, and we're not capturing them with the use of a quality concession stand. And so, that is something that we would like to look at. We don't have dollar figures for you at that point, with hot water and all those types of things that go along with this part of the facility. We'd like to take a look at that. That, if we do, would be either a separate contract or an expansion of the contract with F&amp;H. Both of these, now, if we did the spray ground, that, there's a little bit of trade-out because we do have $15,000 in that $770,000 figure to put into that. And it's something, this is, as, as we started out, this is something that we looked at from the pool perspective. It's been averaged in 20 years. And I can't guarantee you 20 years, but you know, the liner, that warranty is, is a 15-year warranty. But on the average, we're talking about 15 years, 15 to 20 years on this. If this is our only opportunity to renovate and do the spray ground or something like that, or those different amenities in, over the next 15 to 20 years, that's why we at least wanted to show you that as an option. And that's basically the presentation.
Okay, I know Commissioner Abraham, didn't you go through some of the concession areas maybe last year?
Yes, and just the last time you were up here, you showed pictures on the inside, it was terrible. It really was. And so, I think the general feeling was that it desperately need an upgrade, and it's so, it's used. I mean, that's, that's the spot for so many of our residents in the summer, and they deserve better than that. So whatever we can do to get that, to get that done, I think will be money well spent, and will be most appreciative.
And, you know, I think the swimming pool is a huge asset, not just for recreation, but for a place for kids to gather. It's a social activity there as well. And I think, you know, over the years, it's just been allowed to deteriorate, like many of the things, you know, our buildings. And I know we're putting money back each year now for our buildings to keep them renovated.
We've done a lot of work. Rick's staff and my staff did a lot of work on the pool house building last year, as those of you who've been there can attest. And it's, this is just kind of a lead-in to that. We've done a lot of that in-house. There may be a few things that we might be able to do in-house again, but the major issues, I think we need to be really thinking about spending some money on.
Does the swim team still use that?
Yes, we, well, in fact, two years ago, we started a new resurgence with the swim team. And what this actually does, one of the plans, it basically reduces the number of lanes to eight, but it also provides them all at a level they can dive into. Right now, we've got about, we've got 10, but by standard, you can't dive, you're not supposed to dive in headfirst into that shallower area, it's three feet or less. So this is getting the eight lanes in a four, four lane, in a, in a four-foot minimum. So that's one of the things we'll be able to do. And they're going to get a lot of use.
Commissioner?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. How many people do you, does the pool bring in each, each summer season, do you know?
I had that number, I, I know our average, and you know, you have days when they're good days and bad days, our average is somewhere in the, close to 300 a day.
Per day?
Per day, and we're open 12 weeks, 10, 12 weeks. So you take out one day a week, because we have been closed on Mondays. But this one thing, and I forgot to mention this, if you go back to the, where the filtration system is, and we talked about it being automated, we don't have to shut the pool down to turn that on. So we could actually be open again seven days a week, if we wanted to go to that point. And a few years ago, our operations, we reduced it and stopped closing on our, we were closed after school got out. Could consider going back to open up on weekends if that were a capability and possibility.
It's a little over 21,000 people who enjoy the pool during the summer season. Was the list in order of priority? I mean, I know, I don't know that we could do all of those things if we decided to tackle them at once, but is, I mean, are there some of the things we could do one year and then...
Really, that, once we get into this filtration system and all that, that, that is a one-shot deal. That everything, pretty much everything on that $770,000 list, because number one, you're running new piping in for the, any slide or any, any raindrop or anything else like that. You're running that, you're only going to want to tear that concrete up once.
It all has to be done at once, then?
Pretty much, pretty much. It's, and I can go back to that. If you look at it, these were all the things that, from the mechanical standpoint, that gives you a safe, cleanly operated facility. It doesn't give you a lot of bells and whistles, but it does give you an operational, a good operation, operating pool. I mean, up to date.
It's like a roof on your house. Every 20 years, you do have to do something.
Exactly.
And it's been, how long now?
It's been, it was 1992. And so...
Well, I think it's important that we keep our core facilities maintained and updated. And I think it's important that kids have a place to go in the summer. Not everybody has a friend with a pool.
True.
And it keeps kids occupied in the summer, that maybe they'd be out getting in trouble. So, I mean, it's a good thing.
So the guidance, I guess I'm seeking from you all, just in general, is the, is to look into the concession and the spray pad portion of it.
I like the spray pad especially, you know, I don't know how you all, if you all have calls from people, but more people want more spray parks in Paducah, and I think that facility would really be used. I don't know how much the baby pool is used, the waiting pool.
Actually, the baby pool, over the past couple of years, we've had so much problems with filtration system and the piping and everything else. It's been closed half the time. And that's, it's just one of those types of things where I think this will be a draw. I think it will be.
And the spray park seems to gain in popularity.
It's, it's just a positive. There's kids, people have asked us to rent it and all that, and we don't. We don't ever want to close that down, just for a sole source or anything.
I know Nolan enjoys it.
Mm-hmm.
He loves it.
Spray parks now in malls.
Right.
Yeah. Does grandpa enjoy it?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So...
You're wanting us to give you guidance tonight on the design phase?
Yeah, to continue with the look at the building, and the, primarily the concession stand, and the spray pad portion of it. Yeah, to continue with the look at the building and the, primarily the concession stand and the spray pad portion of it. I don't have a dollar figure. Basically, we will, we'll have to spend a little extra money of consultant money to come back with the pricing, the hard pricing. I think we've got a pretty good price of about $120,000 for the features you saw there. But I do not have a price on the building because, and particularly concession stand, because there's so many different ways we can go with it. And we'll wanna narrow that down and bring that to you on the direction. And the one thing we can do is continue and go ahead and get the pool done. We still have a pretty good window for the concession, too.
Well, I know it's so small and there's not much that you can serve out of there, correct?
Well, there's one, actually, we found out, there's a room next door to it that we can take a wall down and expand that, expand it also, as we have that capability.
Cause if you could expand the menu, I mean, it really would make a difference.
If we're gonna captivate, if we're gonna capture people, we're gonna capture them, right?
Exactly, exactly. But I would certainly like to see those options and see what the dollar costs are and what opportunities.
We can go to that and spend a few, a little bit of extra money to get the right answers for that, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I think probably, it sounds like we're all supportive. I would wanna get the dollar figures on renovating or new construction for concession. And then, of course, we'd wanna talk to John Perkins to see, you know, how the budget would play. See if that's something we can financially afford. And then if it is, then probably move forward with it.
Do you have the money in your budget now to, for the consultant?
We can get it, we can go for now.
Okay.
At this point.
All right.
Good job.
Move on. Okay. Commissioner comments? Public comments, we have one tonight. David Hutchinson, you'll come on up, please. Welcome.
Hi. Good to see you guys again. Thank you all for, thank you all for taking a few minutes to hear what I've got to say. I've also got Dr. Halden Ford with me. He's one of the ones serving on the committee for the sports park or the soccer complex. Just wanna set, make a few brief statements. I think we all know, and we've talked about it considerably, why we need a sports park. It's for our youth and something for our community to be proud of, to bring our community up to the standards of like Owensboro, Bowling Green, Lexington, Evansville, and even Martin, Tennessee. Our existing facilities for soccer, we've talked about this a lot, are terrible at best. Subsidance, environmental hazards, we're unable to light them, we're unable to have sewers, unable to have underground sprinkler systems, poor drainage, the list goes on. And also the economic impact to our community. And what I really wanna talk about just briefly is, why is the proposal to use the fields from the three existing McCracken County high schools not the preferred or even best idea for our community? I think after our last meeting, the county commission had a meeting and it was real quick. And there was a proposal to use the existing three soccer facilities from the three high schools to meet our needs. I just wanted to briefly say why we as the committee that are trying to raise the funds don't feel that that's in our best interest, even though it's a wonderful gesture by the McCracken County School Board. The fields will still have to service the middle schools for each of those areas. Middle school teams, at least my child plays for Paducah Middle School, and so does Dr. Ford's, they call practice whenever. They have that right, cause it's their field. So coaches, volunteer coaches, won't have access to those fields like if they were a public field. This leaves recreational coaches without facilities to practice for and makes scheduling games very difficult. They're not in one location. We're talking three distinct areas of the county. You can't hold a tournament at three different locations. When my own children were small, we had multiple games going on at the same time. My wife would go one way, I would go another way. We don't wanna be across town from each other to be at a soccer game. Large tournaments would be out of the question. People don't wanna come to a community and have to find Heath and then Reedland for their second tournament and over to Lone Oak. And we're only talking three fields. And the existing fields, like we discussed earlier, are terrible. Owensboro, I believe, was hosting the Bluegrass Games. Is that right, Mark?
No.
State Cup. But just to give an idea of the Bluegrass Games, found this reference, it was a study done by the University of Kentucky. It had $6.9 million in economic impact to the state. Games participants and spectators spent approximately $1.2 million on lodging, $2.6 million on food, and $1.6 million on fuel. This was just to help illustrate the popularity of youth and adult sports tournaments in the Bluegrass State. As stated in my previous discussions, a single tournament of 40 soccer teams could have an economic impact of $550,000-plus dollars to our community. The McCracken County Youth Soccer Association in 2011 had a tournament, I think we heard of 26 teams. That had almost doubled from the previous year. Our community has proven that we can host large events at even poor facilities, like the ones we have that don't have bathrooms, no electricity for concession stands, poor field conditions, and we still had 26 teams. Just imagine what we could do if we had a large complex. Lastly, fundraising is continuing. Large numbers of letters were sent out to businesses and corporations in the past two weeks. We have some large prospects working in regards to naming rights. There's a lot going on now. And I hope to be able to update you in the coming months on the fundraising. But again, I just wanted to say that it was a nice gesture of the three fields, but it doesn't meet our needs. It will never meet our needs until we have an adequate facility to match what we see in Owensboro, Bowling Green, and similar communities of our size. And even Martin, Tennessee, which is considerably smaller. But I thank you for your time and if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer it.
You know.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. David, it seems like the, you know, what I've heard and read, some concerns that some people have in the community about that location. And it's the best piece of property, we discussed that, is the proximity or lack of proximity to the hotels and restaurants. Do you know how many miles, how many minutes it is from the hotels and restaurants cluster? I've been told a number of minutes. I don't know if that's accurate, but I was wondering if you had ever mapped that out to see how far that is. And also in your experience in going to tournaments, I just don't imagine that you got all your soccer fields and where your tournament site is right next to all the hotels and restaurants. You couldn't afford that price of land.
No, sir.
Start with to build a soccer complex on it. So it's not gonna sit next door to it.
Mr. Watkins.
You can't afford it. So I wonder if you would address that.
You're completely right. And it's not uncommon for some of the big facilities to be a few minutes away. Families like to travel to these facilities. And Dr. Ford, do you mind, you live out that way. Could you address how long it takes you to get from that? He lives out that way and he could kinda give us a better idea of what it takes to get to the hotels and?
Well, I'd estimate at most 15 minutes from the mall area. Could be as short as 10, but it's at most 15 minutes from the mall exit.
And our experience, we've traveled, our families have traveled together to these soccer tournaments. It's, that's well within reason of what we've seen and not a problem. And I think, again, that that opens up that area. It's got visibility right off the Interstate 24. And again, it was the only of those six sites that did not flood during the 2011 flooding. Yes, you had to come in on a different road and that made the trip longer, but the site itself, it was not impacted by the flood.
So a 10 to 15-minute drive is not uncommon from your experiences in going to Owensboro, Martin, or these other communities and?
I think when we stayed in Owensboro and had tournament, it's called Thompson Berry Park in Owensboro. I bet I had a 15 to 20-minute drive from our hotel to where that park was.
Also, the Three Springs Park in Bowling Green is probably 10 to 15 minutes from. I believe it's called Three Springs Park in Bowling Green is a popular destination. And it's probably 10 to 15 minutes off Scottsville Road in Bowling Green, which is the main, the main developed area there with hotels and businesses.
So about the same distance.
Any other comments? Questions?
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Listen to us.
Well, I just, I wanna be clear and so the audience is clear, too, that you really don't feel like that location is out of the way. And you know, I had that gut check, I believe it was February 26th, there was an editorial in the Paducah Sun that talked about the soccer community. They didn't believe the soccer community was unwilling to raise funds, but that you were simply unimpressed with the, the soccer community was unimpressed with the out-of-the-way location. And I think what I'm hearing you say is you really don't believe that it's an out-of-the-way location. It's a good location. I think we all need to hear you say that.
Yes, I believe it's a good location and it has been well-studied by, I believe, well, the engineers have left the firm that was here that did that work. And like Commissioner Watkins said, you can't go and buy land right next to the hotels at the mall. Nobody could afford it. But in land that was affordable, that met the needs, I believe there was six pieces of property studied. It is absolutely the best of those six locations that we had to pick from.
Yeah. And now that you just reminded me that the Florson Hutchinson did do that study and analyzed those six parcels and rated them, and they rated this one, number one.
Yes, sir.
When you considered all the different aspects of it, it came in first place.
And I believe also that, that back during that time, during the flood, another member of our, of our group that's trying to raise funds, Dr. Butler drove out there. And it was, it was the only one of the six sites that did not flood during the 2011 flood. So. Any other questions?
Well, the article that was, that Carol referred to, the editorial, I never thought that the location was a problem. But I do think what can be a serious problem for the city of Paducah is funding.
Yes, ma'am. I understand that.
You know, we've got a lot on our plate and things that we'll have to discuss at our budget retreat.
And I saw that tonight.
Right.
Now, we've got.
Got a lot facing.
A lot of things that need to be done, so.
Do you all have a deadline that you've?
We are shooting for, I think we discussed it, we would like a year, but if not, we will try to cut it shorter. But.
Cause we'll start budgeting in May.
Is there any way to raise money from team fees or, so do you charge the players anything to participate?
Well, that would be up to the McCracken County Youth Soccer. Jeff Aiken's not here tonight. But they do charge fees for the tournaments. But the majority of the money that we're talking about raising is probably from naming rights and contributions of corporations and individuals.
So have you all been to the county? Have you all talked to them?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Are you going to?
It's been kind of a closed door, but I don't think with what we saw one week after that it'll bear much fruit. But I'm willing to take a try.
A lot of people think we're crazy for going it alone on county property. I mean, I hear that a lot. I'm sure, I'm sure you all do, too.
But you know, we've read the paper and we listened to the meetings and that's one of the reasons I wanted to come here, to at least say why, you know, the three, using the three schools doesn't meet, meet our needs as a community. And plus, when you, when you go visit a Bowling Green and Owensboro, you know, yes, and Evansville's larger. But when you see Martin, Tennessee, and their facility compared to what we have, it's a bit of an embarrassment.
Well, and I guess my question is, I appreciate you coming here and telling us why it doesn't meet your needs. But have you thought about explaining to the county why it doesn't meet your needs and asking them if they would like to partner?
Well, I mean, there's been discussions between the mayor and you guys, and there was even, I believe, a vote. And it didn't go anywhere. And I've read the articles of what the existing commission on that side hasn't changed any. And I don't think.
But the mayor's not as passionate as you are.
No, I understand that. Yes, ma'am. Well, point well taken.
Okay.
I think one thing people need to consider is that I don't think there's a parcel of ground in the city limits that would be of adequate size to have a soccer complex. If I remember correctly, all six of those parcels, which was all Mark Thompson's study discovered, and were all in the county. Was that not correct? There's no parcels in the city of Paducah that's large enough to have a soccer complex.
That's, and that's a major, I mean, that's, that's an issue. And we're talking about taking down housing projects and things of that nature. And that largest parcel that I know of, probably in the city, is only about six acres that's flat ground like that. And that's not large enough.
So you think it'll take a year or two?
We would hope sooner. We've, we've got some things that we're not at liberty to discuss right now, but that are going well. And we hope, hope to make inroads soon. And as soon as I have word on any major thing, I would like to come back to you guys.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Thank you for listening, Tammy.
All right. We have an executive session tonight. Commissioner Abraham?
I moved the board going to closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Proposed or pending litigation as permitted by KRS 61.8101C. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize a location retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second. And we will not be making any decisions, so we will not be coming back.
Can we vote?
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye.